What does it mean when you can't see your picture? When the picture doesn't show up? Does anybody hear me?
Yes ma'am, so if you look beside the mute button that you know you use to the right of it, you'll see a start video and then that'll make you where you can see yourself.
Now, okay, now there you go.
So now we know you know where the mute button is, don't we?
Yeah, my, well mine, it says mute all the time. I thought we cleared that up yesterday.
I don't know, Miss Elaine. I think some of us-
Okay, so when I push, okay, when I push the participant, I see-
Howard Lane does not have a mute button on hers.
All right, we're about ready to get started?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Howard Nettles?
I'm here mayor.
John Millian?
President.
Nettles, I hear you. Backus?
I don't know if I've missed roll call, but I'm here.
Uh, Brian?
Council on Backus is here, I think she might, she's, I'm not sure if she can hear you, but she's here, I see her.
Mr. Seager's here? She is here, I see she is. All right, so we're missing, Mr. Seager's is off. All right, you ready to go and get started?
I'd like to motion that we call this meeting to order.
Okay, I second. All right. Thanks everybody for coming today, uh, it's Tuesday for the city of Darlington, uh, 2021 budget work sessions. Uh, we met yesterday, meeting again today, hopefully we can finalize everything today. Appreciate everybody coming in on a rainy day, we'll say a prayer and we'll get started. Dear everybody, thank you to the state, or thank you for all the rain, thank you for keeping us safe, watch over God, rest us all, we send it to the Lord. Give us the wisdom that we need to do things properly and, uh, provide, uh, necessary things that we need for our city. We love you, just same heart, amen. All right, Howard Garland?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, if you'll turn to page 10, we'll start with the legislative, uh, branch. This will be the branch that encompasses mayor and council. So everyone, please turn to page 10 for legislative. Your salary and wages are forty thousand two fifty eight for this year and forty one oh six three for next year, that includes two percent uh, adjustment. Retirement fund fluctuates a bit because some of the council members are not on state retirement and others are. Um, I believe we have four that are on state and three that are off. Social Security goes up a little bit, insurance and bonds is only a hundred bucks, total, the tour and insurance there has gone up some to seventy three fifteen. Under two fifteen, that covers the traveling expenses for the annual, uh, meeting in, uh, July in Charleston. But I had sent out a text earlier today to council members and mayor that that meeting has been canceled due to COVID nineteen, so there will be no MASC annual meeting this year in Charleston. What the municipal association is going to do is to hold a virtual meeting on July the sixteenth. So please make a note of that in your calendars, the MASC will have a virtual meeting on July the sixteenth. They will send more details out for the agenda and, uh, just, uh, information for that session. So please note that the meeting in Charleston is canceled July fifteenth through seventeenth due to COVID nineteen, but they will have a virtual meeting for council members and mayor on July the sixteenth. Don't worry about any of the hotel reservations, everything's going to be refunded back to us. So actually, it's going to be quite a savings, probably around eighty five hundred dollars for the city with, uh, without having an expenditure. Two twenty one is the mayor's cell phone.
Howard, I have a question.
Yes.
Just to kind of get myself oriented. The first column we ran into as we were going through things with Freddie last night, it sounded like first column is the budgeted amount. Second column was going to be, or was the column showing the money that had actually been spent this year?
Second column-
And I'm just wondering if i- is that the way it is set up so that just for like the retirement fund at two sixty seven, we had budgeted four thousand two hundred and forty four dollars and we have spent three thousand four hundred and sixty three dollars, is, is that the way to read it?
Yes sir, that's the way to read it, line one is the budgeted, line two is the, uh, actual expenditures.
Through what date?
Through the end of this year, and, and some of those are estimates, some of them aren't, but as I was telling you earlier, the retirement, there are three council members that opted not to have retirement, not taking out of their salaries, and four that have, do have state retirement taken out. That's why that number's different.
All right, since we're not going to the, um, convention, and you were talking about a savings, how do we handle carryovers when we don't spend items in a particular budget? Where does that money go?
We don't carry those items over usually sir, unless there's a, a motion by a council member to do that, we zero everything out for the next year.
Well, in theory, we should have money in the bank, shouldn't we?
We do, yes sir, yes we do.
Well, where does that money that we actually have accumulated show up? And
If you look on-
Decisions about where are we going to spend it?
If you'll look on, let me find this, you're kind of getting me off track here, I gotta find the answer, you're holding a minute. Um, if you go to page number eight, general fund recap. Page eight, general fund recap. See where-
All right.
See where it says the cash on hand, that's the cash on hand that we had on hand on July first, twenty nineteen, a million one seventy eight nine forty four.
Okay.
So that's where that money goes.
All right, at some point in time, do we get a chance to look at that and see how we can utilize the, the surplus on hand for these expensive projects we've got coming up?
Uh, yes sir, that's a possibility, but we won't know what cash we have on hand until July first.
Right.
So that, but yes sir, but that would-
We had a million, we had a million one July one of two thousand nineteen.
Yes sir.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it, it gives me a better understanding of, we've, we've got our budget, but we've also got some money that is left on hand that we will know effective July one, and then we can start determining what we want to do with it, if anything.
Yes sir, that's correct.
Okay.
So, uh, continuing on with the legislative breakdown, we were talking about the traveling expenses and the phone, uh, cellphone for the mayor. Uh, meals for the work sessions is something that we've added for next year because the council had said they wanted to have more work sessions. And other operating expenses, you see there are listed under two seven nine, so your totals for, uh, number five hundred uh, sixty five one forty three is what we project to be actually spent for this year, and the cost for next year are sixty four five oh four. Are there any questions for legislative five hundred? If not, let's move on to municipal court, five ten, page eleven. One oh one under salary and wages. Council adopted ninety nine thousand one hundred and forty seven, we've gone over that to a hundred and nine oh three seven. As I mentioned earlier, that's due to us using a, um, associate judge that we have because we have conflict sometime with our current judge, Robert Stucks. If he, he has a defense, uh, he runs a, he's an attorney in Florence, and sometimes there's a conflict when, uh, somebody comes before him in that court, excuse me just a minute. So that's over by about ten thousand dollars. Insurance and bonds, thirteen seven thirty two. That's going to go down a little bit next year because we were able to consolidate some savings for that line item. Tour and insurance is four eighteen, workers' comp is six fifteen, and there, there are your retirement fund, that goes up a percentage for both, um, state retirement for the regular retirement system and the police officers retirement system. Social Security is listed there also, so your totals down at the bottom, one thirty six five seven three was, uh, actually what we had adopted and we paid out one forty nine one oh nine, we estimate for next year, one thirty nine nine zero nine. That's for, again, for personnel services from municipal court. If you look under operating expenses, printing and office supplies, twenty two hundred, we project two thousand and twenty five dollars, we've got two thousand for next year. Postage costs are going to, from one thousand to thirteen hundred, we put twelve hundred down. Phone costs were, were forty dollars below what we had, uh, budgeted, so we're going to put that at two sixty, maintenance and service contracts were, uh, over by five thousand dollars, we did consolidate some of the maintenance and service contracts, we did away with the Pitney Bowes machine for a considerable amount of savings, and we also went with, uh, another copier companies, it's going to save us probably a hundred, uh, ten dollars a month, so we're going to hope to bring those costs in line with our line items for three and four. Machine and equipment expense, we only had two hundred dollars, and we still leave that at fifteen hundred. Employee training is for, uh, conferences for the judge or for the clerk or the assistant clerk. Other operating expenses, two seventy nine was eight fifty, we're leaving that at twelve hundred. Jury fees, we're going to put it seven fifty, we had three hundred and ten dollars in jury fees for this year, and that would have been higher. But a jury trial that we had, had, uh, planned for this year, everything's been moved back to next year, uh, due to COVID nineteen. I believe the, um, memos, there won't be any, any court until July twelfth, so that's, that's the reason for that. Capital spending is going to be in your next page and page eleven, furnitures and fixtures is, uh, seven hundred dollars for next year, office machines, seven hundred dollars for that next year, we haven't spent any out of either one of those. Your final totals for five ten, one fifty two seven two three, and we actually spent one six six oh five four, we budgeted for next year, one fifty five four nineteen, one five five four one nine, any questions about five ten?
Has he been recusing himself less lately?
Um, not as much this, this calendar year as in, in twenty nineteen. But it was a considerable amount in twenty nineteen, I think we were able to work, working out where it's, the load is not as heavy on the associate judge this year.
Thank you.
Well, page thirteen, we have elections, which is five twenty two seventy nine, as you know, we had a council seat and three at-large seats up for election last year, our projected costs were ten thousand, we only spent seven thousand eighty. We have no elections planned for this year, so that's maybe one of the easiest things we look at all night. Any questions for five twenty on page thirteen? Very good, thank you. Five thirty two sixty five, professional services, this is going to be Kevin Etheridge and the Gardner Law Firm. You see, we had budgeted thirty five, but his services have cost us forty five this year. We have twelve thousand for the retainer, which we give him a thousand dollars a month in litigation of cases, it's twenty three thousand. Um, I guess each of you know how much we utilize, uh, Kevin Etheridge. I won't say anything about previous, uh, attorneys, but Kevin attends all of our meetings and our work sessions, and so, uh, we lean on him a good bit for, uh, advice and consent on some things, and, uh, we appreciate, or I do appreciate his service, so any questions about, uh, legal operating expenses? Moving on to number fifteen, community promotions. This is five fifty, five five zero. We have five five zero zero three, Community Cemetery, that's Darlington Memorial Cemetery, two hundred dollars. The contingency funding, we've had seventeen fifty spent out of that so far. That's money that's available to each council member if they want to have a, fund a nonprofit within the city of Darlington. We've cut that down to seven hundred for next year, so that'll mean a hundred dollars is available for each council member or mayor to use as they see fit for a nonprofit in the city of Darlington. The Pine Center, five five zero one one, we've cut by a thousand dollars to four thousand. Let me also note that we have four thousand dollars in the recreation budget, which is available for Pine Center also, so that's four thousand dollars in community promotions and four thousand dollars from recreation budget for, uh, operating costs for the Pine Center. PD RTA, this is something that we expanded on last year where, uh, previous mayor and council decided to add Saturday bus service, that's why those costs are up. So we provide bus service, uh, Monday through Friday and also on Saturday. Um, if you want, I can, uh, certainly have Don Strickum come to a council meeting and present the benefits of, uh, the bus service, we have forty five different, uh, stops in Darlington, they run usually from nine until five, Monday through Friday, and I think they run an abbreviated eight to twelve or nine to one route on Saturday. Our projected costs for PD RTA for next year are fifteen eight fifty. The Lord Cares is, uh, we have slated for two hundred dollars. PD Coalition Against Domestic Sexual Assault, two hundred dollars, Council on Aging, two hundred dollars, your totals for this year, twenty three eight sixty two, and for next year, twenty one three fifty, do we have any questions about anything under five fifty? Moving on to page sixteen, accommodations tax. You see, we have different, uh, activities listed here, these are usually for events. Our ATAX has been down because of the closure of the Darlington motel, um, they have been rehabbing those buildings for quite a while now, so our ATAX has been off. You see the lower collections for this year. Uh, so far, we have budgeted two thousand sixteen fifty has been spent. Next year, we project them to go up slightly with the opening up that motel again, hopefully, and we've raised the, uh, money for those different events. Seven hundred for the Sweet Ted Festival, the Race Parade, seven hundred, Race Fest, seven hundred. Darlington County Cultural Realism Charm Incorporated, seven hundred dollars, and the Christmas Parade, they raised the cost of the floats by fifty dollars. So we raised that to four hundred and fifty from four hundred, so your totals there. Uh, sixteen fifty spent this year, thirty two fifty budgeted for next year, any questions about, uh, ATAX?
Howard, I've got a question, just do we have any kind of report coming from these entities as to what they are doing with the funds that we are providing so that we, we kind of have some idea of what's taking place? How the money's being spent?
Some yes and some no sir, um, I know the Sweet Ted Festivals, Sweet Ted Festival is good about giving us a report. And I believe looking on the previous page, that we get a report from RTA, PD RTA actually sends us an audit. Um, I'm not sure about other, uh, some of these other folks, uh, I know we've had some solicitations from some other nonprofits, but usually unless they're based in Darlington City or Darlington County, we, uh, we usually try to just work with those folks that work here.
Can we ask for that going forward from each of these that we provide dollars for?
Uh, yes. Any other questions? Next up is the, uh, finance department, which is administrative. This is going to be your city manager, your-
I guess, I apologize, before we move forward, um, on the hospitality, the accommodations and the community relations, um, budgets. We previously in the past four years have been going and giving money for the Race Fest, for instance. Are we going to start reflecting that in the budget because it's, it's kind of repetitive?
So we're, we're back now on the ATAX, is that what you're asking?
I mean, I don't know, I guess it would probably go into community promotions, but for instance, you know, every year we're, um, we're done anything towards that, I'm just wondering if we're going to start reflecting that in the budget, or is that just not reflected because I come to council?
Well, I can, I can answer that, yes sir. Money that's requested to council, that's, uh, let's say fifteen thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars comes directly out of the hospitality tax account. So that is not reflect, the hospit, that hospitality budget is not reflected in accommodations tax or community promotions. And so the, like the monies that we gave last year, it was, uh, five thousand dollars for the Veterans Memorial, ten thousand dollars for the Veterans Memorial, um, I'm sorry, five thousand for the Cotton Museum Memorial, ten thousand for the Veterans Memorial, five thousand for the Sweet Ted Festival and fifteen thousand Freedom Fest, that all came out of the hospitality tax collections account.
Is there nowhere that we could reflect it, or should we start reflecting it for the future so that at least the community knows where we're spending our funds?
Um, Lisa Rock and I have researched that a bit, um, maybe it would be a topic for a work session. Um, because I hate to get too much off a course tonight, but what we would, what we had been looking at doing was taking a chunk of hospitality monies collected each year and budgeting that for some of those requests, whatever that amount would be that council would decide on, and that would be independent of community promotions or ATAX. But that's just a thought, um, certainly, what we could do is put out a request for, uh, any event that's held in, in the city, if they wanted to receive funding from the hospitality tax account, you could look at that and judge it yourselves, or you could assign a committee as other towns do, or, or Darlington County does to assign that funding, and then you vote on the request from the committee.
I don't know if we have enough excess funds in that to start soliciting, um, you know, grant opportunities through that, I want to kind of keep it tight and use it on hard, you know, hard scapes, actual parks and playgrounds right now, minus the projects that we are supporting.
But that, that, but that, that would be an idea there, but if you, uh, is, is nothing this hard and fast is, is to how we do that, we just have always taken those larger requests and taken them out directly out of a hospitality tax collections account.
I understand, I just didn't know if we could reflect it anywhere so that we could show what we've done in the previous, you know, year.
Uh, we, the auditor asked us several years ago to take the hospitality tax account out of the regular budget because I felt like we were using it to balance the budget, so that's why it's not reflected in the regular budget.
Gotcha, understood, thank you for your time.
Um, finance department is next, and that's the, uh, on page seventeen, the city manager. Our esteemed court treasurer, our assistant court treasurer, and, uh, Lacy who does our business license and hospitality tax collections. Your salary and wages are two seventy nine five nine five for this year, a two percent increase to next year makes it two eighty five one eight seven. Your insurance and bonds for four employees are twenty five five forty eight, tour and insurance is twelve eighty five, up from ten twenty eight. Workers' comp is down a little bit, eight ninety. The retirement fund, again, going up one percent from one year to the next reflects an increase of, uh, close to four thousand dollars, social security is around twenty one thousand, almost twenty two thousand dollars for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, so your twenty nineteen, twenty twenty total is three seven two two one two. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is three eight one nine five four. Operating expenses, you have your printing and office supplies. At nine thousand, we went to eleven five, so we budgeted eleven thousand for next year, postage, I believe that was an increase, but they did a good job of holding those costs down this year, we're raising that to twenty, or lowering that, pardon me, to twenty seven fifty. Membership dues at a hundred, auto operating expense at two seventy five. Our phone has all gone up some to twenty three twenty two, so we put that at twenty three, twenty three thirty five. Maintenance and service contracts, we spent fourteen oh two one out of sixteen, we're raising that to twenty for next year. Building and equipment insurance is a hundred twenty two dollars, employee training, we have slated, uh, a thousand that's not been spent, but we have five hundred budgeted for next year on page eighteen. Professional services, again, that's the audits that we mostly charge to there, under three eighty, or under two sixty five, thirty one seven thirty two. We have budgeted fifteen thousand for next year. Under capital, I'm sorry, the totals there for O and E, we had budgeted forty seven four eighty one, we spent sixty two oh nine seven, budgeted for next year, fifty one eight oh seven. Under capital outlay, furniture and fixtures, a thousand dollars, nothing spent, so we have eight hundred for next year. Machines and equipment, we spent nine eighty eight, we have eight hundred budgeted for next year, so your totals under capital outlay, nine hundred eighty eight dollars out of two thousand and sixteen hundred budgeted for next year, your totals for that department for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, actually spent four thirty five two nine seven, budgeted for next year, four thirty five three six one. Any questions about five seventy?
Howard, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Seager, remember Smith.
I've got, um, just a general information question on five seventy, it sounds like that it covers the salaries of the people who work inside the main administrative building. But if there is physical work that needs to be done to that building, an office needs to be painted, the restrooms in that building need to be rehabbed. Where does that show up within the bit, within the budget, is there a separate, or is where is it, I'm just wondering, things like that have to be paid for?
Yes sir, that comes up under the next, uh, uh, department, under public buildings.
Okay.
And Howard, my, my question was on item two, two two six. If we had, um, for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, a sixteen hun, sixteen thousand, then the actual was fourteen, and we're gearing it up to a twenty thousand. Why the disparity between sixteen and twenty when there was a decrease in the actual?
That's a good question, and I don't have the answer right off the bat, I'll have to find it for you tomorrow, I'm sorry. Um, some things are right on the tip of my tongue, that's, that is not, um, I'm sure, I'm sure there was a reason why I did it at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, um, Howard, my question is, uh, on four of these, on, uh, number one oh one for wages and salaries, uh, who all does that include? I mean, everybody?
That would be, that would be myself, the clerk treasurer, the assistant court treasurer, and, um, the person who handles the business license and hospitality tax. Four of us.
Okay, and then, uh, maintenance and service, number two twenty six, as they asked about.
Yes sir.
What, what is the maintenance and service contract, so who do you have contracts with?
That's, that's going to be our, uh, our copier contracts, that's going to be, uh, the termite letter for, uh, that main building for city hall.
And copier, copier was under something earlier on the other one, wasn't it?
That's, that's, that's another department, they have a different cop, they have a cop, they have a separate copier for the, um, for the clerk of court.
For, yeah, a copier contract, and what else?
Um, I believe, let's see, I had mentioned it was the, uh, the termite letter. Uh, I think we paid for a Time Warner Cable out of that for the different, uh, for the, uh, Roadrunner Services, I'm sorry, it's not Time Warner anymore, it's called Spectrum Cable. Uh, anything else that may come, uh, under, let's say like the, uh, security cost for the alarm on the, on the administration building, those are things that come out of that line item.
And then number two sixty five, professional services, what is that?
That's for the audit, we've had three audits done in the last, uh, thirteen months.
That's all, that's all audits?
Uh, mostly, yes sir.
Okay. And like later, if we want, if we want to get all the line items for two twenty six to see where, where the sixteen thousand dollars is going and so forth, I mean, is there a way to get that?
Yes, there is, uh, you'd simply say, uh, you can call Miss Pridgen or myself and say, I, I would like to print out a five seventy two two six for budget year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, or, uh, Ms. Pridgen, Mr. Garland, I'd like to print out a five seventy two sixty five for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
We just go ahead and have that on record as asking for that now?
That's what I was going to say, rather than make a phone call, we're all together, let's just-
That's right.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Sure.
I mean, those, I mean, all I'm, all I'm looking at is those are, those are big numbers, and we just kind of fly by them. And I sure don't want the public to think that I'm just going, hey, oh yeah, I, yeah, I don't want me to bobble and doll, um, you know, those-
That's why I brought it up, mayor.
Those things are going to be looked at clearly, to see if we're doing the, doing the best that we can with that.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, with that said, Howard, there's one other line I would like to have a breakdown of, but I need to find it on this report, it, I'll, um, I'll send it to you. Well, with that said, Hal, there's one other line I would like to have a breakdown of, but I need to find it on this report. It, I'll, um, I'll send it to you.
You say you're gonna, you want to send it to me now? You want to ask for it now? Or, sorry?
Like, I found it in the report first. It was earlier, it was yesterday, one of the lines we went over yesterday. But when I find it out, I'll, um, send it to you, or I sent it to you. I tell you what it is, it's eight oh one. If you go back to page five, it's eight oh one.
Page five?
Page five, eight oh one, non-departmental. We spent fifty-four thousand dollars in that department, so I'd like to have a breakdown of that.
Ms. Priggin, I think I said oh one, two seven nine, if she's, uh, listening. Eight oh one, two seven nine.
It's on page five. That's the one you're reading off of, right?
Um, yes, ma'am. I think eight oh one, two seven two also.
Okay.
And that's the one, I think, Howard, you told us was like, I know you just kind of gave a brief overview. That was like, internal accounting, gym fees, city employee cookouts, those kinds of things, correct?
It is, uh, uh, flowers for funerals. It's on page fifty-two if you'd like to look, um, if you want to look. It's on page fifty-two.
Okay.
So you see, you've got, um, insurance and bonds, toward insurance, membership dues for municipal association, professional services, special contracts, which is gonna include, um, uh, the fitness world, and also Ms. Kim Vincent, and also, I believe psychiatric services that we have with a local company for those that want counseling. And then two seven nine is going to be a special occasions, employee supper, anything that we can't charge directly to a department.
For example, the one that she's asking for, or, or any of them, would they all be broken down more to show?
Two seven two would, two seven two would be broken down, or two seven nine would be broken down, or something with two sixty-two.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Okay. Ma'am, does that help any?
Yeah, that's fine, Hal.
Okay, very good. So we can, we, uh, go to five eighty now, which is public buildings. Five eighty is public buildings on page nineteen. This is the department that, uh, JJ works out of. You see salaries and wages, twenty-nine, two five six, insurance and bonds is sixty-nine, fifty. Toward insurance, two oh six, workers' comp, seven hundred. Retirement fund, forty-five, fifty-two for this year. So, social security, twenty-two, thirty-eight. If you include increases for next year for two percent. Um, the insurance has gone down slightly. Uh, toward insurance has, um, gone up some. Workers' comp remains the same. Retirement fund has gone up. Social Security's gone up a little bit. So the totals, last year, forty-three, nine oh two, for this coming year, forty-four, six one four. Operating expenses, two seventeen auto, which is the truck that, uh, JJ has, five hundred sixty dollars. Electricity, water, and gas, that's gonna be two hundred twenty dollars. I'm sorry, uh, for, it's, uh, line two twenty, thirty-three, oh four three, and we have budgeted for next year, thirty-three thousand. The phone, uh, is four seventy-nine, so we put four eighty for next year. Maintenance and service contracts, five sixty. We've got eighteen hundred budgeted for next year, down from twenty-five hundred. Machinery and equipment expense, that's only got nine dollars spent out of that. Um, building repair, fifteen hundred. Uh, twelve hundred for next year. Electrical lighting supplies, forty-five dollars were spent. We have two hundred for next year. Uniforms, we spent, overspent for that, six eighty-five, so we put six eighty-five down for next year. Cleaning and sanitation supplies, we went over there because of the, uh, the COVID nineteen. And so we spent up to thirty-eight, thirty. We put four thousand on that for next year. Over on page twenty, the general obligation bond payment, this is the bond payment that we have for all the roofs that we had repaired in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. This is, uh, will be the third payment coming up, hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred eighty dollars.
How many payments for all that?
I'm sorry.
How many payments are, is that for?
This, this is going to be for the, this will be the third payment out of, of, of ten on that bond. It was a million dollar bond that we, uh, did redo all of our roofs, including all of our gyms and all of our municipal buildings. So that payment, third of ten, is one twenty-three, five eighty.
Howard.
Sorry?
Howard John Milling, I've just got a question. We've got a bond payment there of a hundred and twenty-three, nine. When we were going through Freddie's department last night, we had a bond payment of a hundred and eighty-one. When we get to, I think it's stormwater, we've got a bond payment of a hundred and eighty. We had talked previously about looking at refinancing some of these outstanding bonds to see what kind of savings we could achieve. I hadn't heard anything further about that, so what's the status on looking at saving money on, on these bond payments?
I happen to have a sheet on that, sir. Um, some of these bonds have a payment penalty due, um. The, uh, water system bond is callable in, in whole or any payment date. Uh, in a hundred, a hundred and one percent of par plus accrued interest. So in other words, we'd have to pay one percent over whatever the, the actual is left on the bond.
And that's for, that's during the first five years or something. I'm just wondering what the status is for, for these various bonds. Some, some might have it, some may not, but my question would be, where are we in looking at whether we can successfully do it, whether it will save us money even if there's a one percent, or what the story is on that, so that as we're building these budgets, we know whether or not we can actually squeeze a little bit more money from the department if we can do the bond, um, refinance. Don't know that we can, but it just seems like it'd be good to know that when you're going into a budget to know what your, your bond payments are gonna be.
Yes, sir. We, we looked at that, um, with, uh, our bond attorney, Ben Ziegler, within the last six weeks. Everything was put on hold due, though, due to the, the fee in lieu of tax agreement, which, uh, we signed recently for Project Peach. And those numbers are being assessed right now as to how that's gonna affect all the, all the bonding. Um, we had.
Those fee in lieu will come in and we'll have that money, but we still got the issue of whether or not we can save money on the bonds, or the fee in lieu would not affect the bond payments, would it?
Uh, it, it, down the road, it could, sir. It just depends on when the actual, um, fee in lieu of taxes is gonna take effect. We're still waiting to get some type of opinion as to when those bond, when the, um, fee in lieu of tax payment is gonna be credited to for the, for the, it won't be this year or next year. We're hoping it's gonna be twenty twenty-two. Um, as far as.
For my request, I'd like to know for these bonds whether or not there's any savings that can be made by refinancing the bonds, uh, which I guess would occur now in the twenty twenty-one fiscal year, just to see if we can pick up some money.
We, uh, looked at that in March, and according to Ben, at that time, with the fluctuation of the interest rates, it was a very unstable time because of, uh, COVID nineteen. He did not actually give us a, a discernible opinion other than things that we need to talk about in executive session as it relates to Water Sewer Department. Um, I don't feel comfortable talking about it on, uh, a virtual meeting.
So let's, let's then make arrangements to get that information so it can be made available to us when we next meet uh, and can go into executive session. Some of it may be.
And we need, we need to meet in executive session to go over the, uh, five hundred agreement for Project Peach because that information has been, uh, we've had it for about a month now. I just, uh, don't want it, don't want the numbers to get out with, without y'all knowing about it in person. I, I, again, I just don't feel comfortable with the format for sharing a lot of this info.
All right. Well, that's Project Peach, but we still, the numbers on refinancing, I mean, I've read them in the paper for other communities, refinancing and saving money. So there's nothing really about executive session for the refinancing.
Ye- yes, yes, there is, sir, because the bond attorney had an opinion um, about Water Sewer Department, and I, I just don't, I mean, I can't speak for him.
Okay.
I just don't feel comfortable. Again, again.
That's, that's fine. If, if he's got an opinion about whether or not something can or can't be done, that's legal advice. Uh, for those where it's just a matter of figuring out whether we can save money, not whether or not we can legally do it, it might be helpful to have him send you something with the opinion as to whether or not it's executive session or open session.
Okay. Yes, sir. Uh, we were looking at number, uh, two fifty, general obligation bond payment. That's one twenty-three, five eighty. Vehicle insurance is six fifteen. That's JJ's car. Building insurance, twelve, two eighty-three. That's an increase from ten thousand, seven hundred. The LED bond payment, those are for our interior lights for all of our municipal buildings. And that's gonna be twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. Uh, we had a considerable savings on that. I think most of you are, are aware of that. I'd be glad to elaborate any on that if you wish. So the totals for the operating expenses are two hundred five thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars, which is slightly under budget of two oh five, eight eight three. Next year, we have budgeted two oh eight, eight, two eight. Capital outlay, building and fixed equipment. Building and fixed equipment. Eighty-three, sixty-nine, we had budgeted, but we spent fifteen, eight, seventy-seven. So, Mr. Milling, that's some of the items that you were talking about, building and fixed equipment. Um, we have budgeted for next year, six thousand. Furniture and fixtures. We didn't spend anything this year. We have budgeted twelve hundred for next year. Three eighty-eight, which is where we, uh, put the money that we had for the village increase for paving our city-owned streets. We had sixty-four, nine budgeted, thirty-five hundred, and spent out of that account, so it leaves us with sixty-one, six, seven, seven. If you want to, um, we could certainly put out the bid for some of these smaller streets to be done, or for one large street, but we're not gonna get much done for the amount of money that we had added to the village, which was around fifty-seven thousand dollars. So I'd be interested in y'all's opinions on whether you want to do several small streets or one large street amongst our city-owned, uh, uh, streets there.
Is the thirty-five hundred added to something to give us a sixty-one thousand, or should we have sixty-four, nine, less thirty-five hundred, plus sixty-one thousand?
Uh, what's left over we haven't spent yet is gonna be around sixty-one, six, seven, seven. Um, the math may, may not, may not.
Sixty, the sixty-one, six, seven, seven is simply mu- the leftover money. It's not any new money that we're.
No, sir. I'm sorry. That, look, I'm, I'm getting my head spinning a little bit here. I'm sorry. All right. Thirty-five hundred is what we spent this year. Sixty-one, six, seven, seven is budgeted for next year. Those.
So that would, would that in theory give us a hundred and twenty thousand for next year?
In, if you wanted to carry over the amount that we haven't spent from the issue, from this year, yes, sir, it would. If, but you'd have to vote to do that, to carry it over.
Okay. If we were to carry it over like that, then we would be able to pay for the projects we originally said we were gonna do last year versus.
Correct.
The game plan.
That's correct. We also have a large paving project coming up with the East Broad Street, whenever that sewer project is done, so it may pay to bid that out along with some of our smaller streets and get a better deal because the paving project for East Broad Street could be north of a hundred fifty thousand dollars or more. It could be as much as a quarter million. Uh, just don't know what the DOT specs are gonna be for that street as to how much asphalt we have to put down and, uh, how much impaction has to be. So we might be able to, to get a better deal if we include East Broad Street with some of our city-owned streets. Just a thought.
It's a good thought.
Um, public buildings, five eighty. Let me give you your final totals here. We had budgeted three twenty-five, oh five four. We spent two sixty-eight, nine two six, budgeted next year, three two two, three one nine. Any questions about, um, five eighty? So folks, I'm gonna hand it off to the capable hands of Lisa Rock for the Planning and Beautification Department, and I'm gonna put my, uh, microphone on mute. Thank you.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure before I started. Um, this is on page twenty-two, and if you're looking at your screen, I've got it up so you can see it. Um, salaries just says the two percent increase. In my department, I have myself, and there previously was a full-time person who was doing the beautification work. Um, they were transferred over to recreation, and now we have two part-time people that are doing that job, which helps us on the insurance side of this part of the budget. You'll see here, you've got, uh, twelve thousand, two seventy-eight spent, and next year's only gonna be six, six, oh two.
Can we question, can we question that now? Is it best to wait later on then?
Uh, it's up to you.
Well, I'm not in agreeance with the two part-time people, um, because one of them's not showed up, to my understanding, and the other one shows up here and there. And I kind of get tired of going by and buying cheeseburgers and crackers and stuff for all the people that are doing volunteer work on the side of roads. I think that, that area needs to be addressed strongly.
I agree with that completely, with, with Kirkus.
I'll address it further when I get, uh, further in the.
Thank you.
All right. Um, workers' comp, retirement, social security. So you see, we've spent just a little bit of money there. Um, operating expenses, printing and office supplies were down a little bit, um, so we've cut that down. Um, postage went up a lot, uh, and that is partially because we are legally required to send a certain number of certified notices. If we have a zoning change request, everybody whose property touches those, uh, that property that wants to request has to get a certified letter, and that costs you about seven bucks per letter. Um, we had probably, I think it was three or four, maybe even five zoning change requests, and if it was in a place where a lot of pieces, a lot of parcels touched it, that was more mail. Um, and of course, we just, you'd have to let people know what's going on. So you don't really have a whole lot of options on that one. Um, anytime we have to reschedule a meeting, um, Historic Landmark Commission, when they have a certificate of appropriateness application, that is another situation where we have to send, um, certified mail out to all the property owners that are contiguous, uh, say, and of course, we did send some extra mail out for the, uh, lighting ordinance update to the businesses so that they were made aware of the changes. Auto operating expense, that's gone up a little, and, uh, this is partially how we've, uh, readjusted the schedule with the individuals. Um, I felt like with the one person coming in, uh, we kind of changed up the duties to have the, when they come in, to check all the spots for big trash or big problems, um, rather than, um, just going through, you know, one day do this spot, next day do this spot, next day do this spot. Well, you may, you know, today's day might be the Rose Garden, but if you drive down Cashmere Ferry, there's a big limb down, or there's, somebody's run into a signpost, and we need to address that, and so uh, that's why I've kind of changed that around, and that's sort of reflected here in the auto operating expense. Um, it has worked to some degree, uh, to reduce the amount of litter in some of the areas. Um, one of the areas that we've, uh, taken up on Chalmers Street near where the stormwater project was done. We planted a few trees in the green space. And, you know, just, that is one of the spots that they check for trash and things like that, and they've, they've notably collected less trash in the spaces just because they see somebody coming by every few days looking, making sure it's cleaned up. Um, telephone, maintenance service contracts, uh, advertising. This is, um, a big part of the budget that, uh, you know, we can always use more advertising. Uh, you can't advertise enough. Unfortunately, uh, for me, uh, and for us, there's a certain amount of legal, legally required advertising. So every year, we have a notice that goes out in the paper, um, saying when these meetings are being held. Um, anytime we add a meeting or a work session, if there's enough time, it's gotta go in the paper. Um, obviously, there's some exceptions for emergency meetings and that sort of thing, and if your time is short, you can just notify the media if it's like a twenty-four hour window or something. Um, but there are a lot of things that do have to be printed in the paper, water quality report, um. There, there's just a lot of different things. Basically, this year, um, and, and next year, uh, we've spent, you know, around four thousand. And, and next year, we've spent, you know, around four thousand dollars on legally required ads. So, just to give you a sense of how much money that, that takes up.
Quick question on that, if the newspaper were, I think they've been sold, but if they weren't closed, then how would you?
If they had closed, we would have to go with the next paper of record. Which would have been the Hartsfield Messenger, which is considerably more expensive, or the Morning News. If there are some, occasionally, we'll get to a point where we are not on schedule with, because the news and press is once a week. Sometimes we'll have to run in the Morning News, depending on how things occurred, and when we have to have it posted. And occasionally, we will have to run something in the Morning News, that is probably twice as expensive. So it would have really hurt our budget considerably if news and press had closed, because you're talking, instead of spending three or four thousand dollars for legal ads. You would have spent, you know, seven or eight. And half your budget would have been eaten up by just things that you have to do. All right, other things that we put in advertising, any kind of radio. For events, Race Week. Also in here are some good faith things, like the congratulations graduate type things. And also the water bill inserts, so the water bill inserts come out of this line item. And it's, we've kept it to one page to keep the postage from changing. Because they, the folks that do the water bill say you can put one sheet and print it on one side, and. They'll, they insert it and everything, and print it for you, and it's the same postage amount, so. But I think that that has really. I've gotten a lot of feedback from the water bill inserts, in terms of events, and in terms of things like this, where we do need to get. Notice about the changes in the budget to every customer. And that's one way to ensure that every customer did get a notice, whether they looked at it or not, debatable, but they were notified.
And we looked at, we brought it up, have you looked at adding the insert for an advertisement?
We have not discussed that. We'd have to have a formal policy, I think, on that, to decide how we would charge everyone. Because I'm certain that. You can get into a lot of sticky situations with that, and of course, our deadline is somewhat. Somewhat ridiculous, because it's the fifteenth to the twentieth I have to have for the thing coming out. You know, on the first of the following month, so like for June's insert. They've already got that file, because I already had to send it to them today, so.
What I'm saying is, is that if you've got a restaurant. Six restaurants that you could put on one sheet of paper, and they're all agreeing to do it for six months, and you're in there for six months, what's going to be on the insert? Can you find out what it would cost to add that insert in there?
To add a second page, you're saying, or a?
Like a second page, I guess, and then that page would just be for advertisement. And then at that point, if it, say it costs five hundred dollars a month to add it, then we know that that sheet's what costs us five hundred dollars, we've got to sell it for more than five hundred dollars. It could be almost a six-month or twelve-month contract with people to. To be on there. Revenue back into the department.
We certainly could look at that.
I think you said you're doing that in other locations, is that correct? Genesis does that?
We'll certainly have.
We, we sometimes do inserts with the water bills and other areas that we service, so. You know, we, we work out a rate with them, they put it in there for us, we pay for the printing, so. It's very doable, and it hits quite a few people, anyone who gets a water bill basically gets, gets one.
It could be, we're just doing individually with one company, or we just put a sheet in there and it's. It's promoted out to five, however many people we can put on that sheet.
Right, at least I'll be glad to help you if there's anything I can.
Well, I think if we decide to go forward on that, I'm going to need to bring a, a schedule of some kind of rules. As far as how, how we would determine who can and can't be on that advertisement.
If it's doable and how, how feasible it is, and then.
It's certainly doable, it's just a matter of. How much it costs, and if people are willing to pay that much.
First thing I would say is just if you find out whatever it costs to add another sheet in, then we can give them there.
We certainly can do that.
Thank you.
All right, so that's advertising. Vehicle insurance went up a little bit, employee training, we've cut that down. This year, there was a couple of extra expenses, part of that was the Economic Development Institute. That I went to, the DRA paid for the. The actual cost of the class, and the city paid for the trap, some of the travel expenses. And that's reflected here, and obviously, since I've graduated that, that's over. Boarding commission training, there are several boards and commissions where commission members are supposed to have training. Some of that can be done at the cog. Sometimes we will have a meeting to encourage commission members to attend. And we haven't obviously been able to have any such meetings, thanks to COVID, because we generally kind of start doing that in the spring. But that's usually around what we spend. Professional services is next. This, there's a lot of stuff that gets put in here, flags. Sort of random, but it has to go somewhere, replacing all the flags on the square, the flags at City Hall, the flag down at. In front of the Chevrolet Place. All those flag replacements are coming through this line item, any kind of web service or thing like that. Some of those come through this, next year, I'm proposing in this twenty thousand to use portion of this zones for archive social. Which is to help us be more compliant with FOIA. And it will take all the data from all of the city Facebook pages. And it will store, because right now, somebody can request that data. And it may or may not be available, because Facebook just kind of randomly deletes stuff when it feels like it. Same thing with Twitter and these other account, these other entities, because they're third parties. They don't really want to have all that stuff sitting on their server. So, and of course, this will, this service specifically will also cover changes and edits. So if you go on Facebook and somebody makes a comment, and it's. I don't delete anything unless it has cuss words in it, and I haven't had to do that. And of course, I screenshot it before. But if you were to do that, somebody puts some cuss words on the, as a comment on the city's Facebook page. I delete it, if I delete it, and it's not there, somebody says, well, I know I posted. I want a copy of that. What was posted, what was deleted? Well, currently, if I don't take a screenshot of it, that doesn't exist. This service and program will make it searchable, and, you know, where we can come up with these things. And that costs us, that's only a cost of about twenty-four hundred dollars. So to avoid any potential drama, I think that's worth it. Also, in this, in this section, PDRTA Shuttle, we contracted with PDRTA. To shuttle during Race Week, to try and get some of the folks that are out at the track to come downtown for events. And for things like that, and to eat in our restaurants, and so we get more benefit from the folks being at the race. I'm proposing doing that more often for race. Race Fest Downtown, as well as the Downtown Concert, and maybe, you know, sometime, another time if we need to. Just to have that in there, also in here goes signage, when we have zoning changes and things like that. You have to have the items posted, and the date, and the time posted on the site. And surprisingly, people steal those signs. I don't know what you do with a zoning sign, but. They get stolen quite frequently, I usually order for one piece of property that doesn't face but one street, I usually order two or three signs, because. Granted, some, for some reason, people think that they're fun to steal. Also, out of this line item, for Race Fest, we, our contribution. We also rent the stage from City of Hartsville for the banquet that night, and pay for the insurance on that. So, and that's about twelve hundred dollars, and of course, that's dependent on what the insurance costs. All right. Next, we have two seventy-two. Downtown Master, two sixty-nine Downtown Master Lease, that was discussed yesterday, that's the rent we pay for the retail spaces downtown. Where the Chamber, our Pat, the McClellan Building, the Hill Building. And the Coleman Building. Website.
That's what we pay Lisa, the company that doesn't pay us back, correct?
Correct. Yes, website maintenance, we project that going up a little bit, we are working on the new website.
That, that strongly needs to be addressed, Howard, we need to definitely. Address paying somebody for years and then not paying us. The whole, the whole situation needs to be addressed, I want that publicly to be known.
One, one caution, or just some food for thought with that. Just something to think about, if we were to somehow work out a deal where we did not have any. Control over those retail spaces anymore. And I hate to put these bad scenarios out there, but I try and think of all the, what could happen. You're talking about, they can, they're going to raise the rent, because you pretty much know it's, it's a, you know, it's a private entity, it's trying to make money. So you, you may be talking about businesses shutting down, and you may be talking about businesses, buildings being empty. And if, when we get seventeen years down the road and get handed back all those buildings, if they're empty for seventeen years. That, that's not going to, they're not going to be in good shape. I'm just throwing that out there as a, just.
Situation from the way I see it, right, this moment is like the building that I have for, for my gym at the, I owe Darlington County Bank for that money. And if I went seven, ten years and only paid for three out of the ten years. And just collected the money, didn't have to pay anything, and then at the end of the term, I just hand the building back twenty or thirty years later. And I kept all that money, I would be done pretty good. But that, somewhere along the line, they would, I would think there should be some penalties for them for not paying that, is what I'm saying is.
Oh, I totally agree, I totally agree, I just don't know the details of that agreement to tell you what those penalties could be.
And then, and then you find out that they were, were paying their water bill to them, they were paying them rents, and. I just, I think there's a big, there's a big red flag there, and this would be strongly addressed, is what I'm asking.
That seems like one of those things that Kevin Etheridge can take a look at the master leases. And look at finding ways that we can benefit ourselves somewhat.
Yes, sir, I, I, it's probably over my head, I'm sure, if somebody.
Well, a, a, and Howard and I briefly talked about it this morning, we knew we didn't have time to address it in time for tonight's meeting, but we will. Take a look at it.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, two seventy-one, website maintenance, we expect that to go up a little bit, currently, we are working with Asset Technology Group. To do an updated website, it will be cityofdarlington.com to match everybody's city email addresses. So that we look much more professional, and the current website of DarlingtonSConline.com. We will still maintain that name, so if you type it in, and you've got it saved. As that, it will just redirect to the new site, and we hope to have that going live sometime here in the next couple of weeks. And you'll know in your email, I sent y'all a bio questions, so that we can kind of expand. On what, what information we have on the website.
When, when do you need us to respond and send you a picture?
Probably in the next week or two.
Thank you.
All right, two seventy-two, beautify, beautification flower pots, this is the supplies for the staff. That do the beautification work, and when I say the beautification work, here are the areas that we're talking about, so that we're all on the same page. You know, that, we're talking about the entrances to the city, so where we have the big welcome signs with the brick pillars. In front of Horizon, in front of the Chevrolet Place, where there's those flag close, flag poles and trees. The gas pillars in front of Walmart, the gas pillars over by Cashmere Ferry and Pocket Road. The welcome sign in front of McLeod, the Rose Garden. The Chalmers Street Park that I mentioned earlier, which is more of a green space. Basilisk Garden, next to the library, was previously included in this. Lamar Highway, near Fast Track, there's another large area, green space that's. Got a welcome sign, it's got roses, and the garden club keeps adding stuff, and it looks beautiful. In front of Washington Street, and of course, we're also looking at other areas on some of the ancillary side, the entrances to town. To add some kind of signage and things like that. Old Florence Road, for example, we've got one of the old Welcome to Darling designs repurposed and repainted. And put it there at Old Florence Highway, I'm sure that they may want to at some point put some trees there, or. Some sort of planting, because the Housing Authority is on board with. Keeping it watered and in good repair, but those are just some of the areas. The walkways between, to connect the parking lots in downtown that are behind the buildings. So behind the Carolina Bank Plaza Building, there is a walkway that goes next to Bond Insurance. We've got an archway that says Darlington, we've got flowers and benches, the benches around the square, the pots around the square. Those kinds of things are what we, this person, the beautification person handles. As far as this breakdown of supplies. We usually use around four thousand, thirty-seven hundred to four thousand dollars on mulch, pine straw mulch. We're trying to start converting over to all mulch, so we don't have to spend as much on pine straw. Repairing equipment, tools, soil, fertilizer, plants, just miscellaneous supplies, you know. Drill bits, wasp spray, ant killer, ryegrass seed, ramp, kind of stuff like that. That has anything to do with any of those beautification of those areas. Trimming and plant, planting trees, two seventy-three. We're a little bit over, and we always kind of have to guess on this one, how many storms we're going to get. Sometimes we get by, last year, we actually got by pretty well, we only had two storms. That cost us about four thousand dollars. For the damage that was done, and, but we had six large oak trees that had to be removed, and that ran about twelve thousand dollars. So those are some of the ways that we end up getting over on the line item. Obviously, if there's a hazard tree limb hanging over the sidewalk, we've got to get it cut down. We don't have a bucket truck or anything like that, so we do have to contract that out. We typically use Trees R Us or Hope Tree Service, mainly because Hope Tree Service comes. If I pick up the phone tonight, they'll come in the morning or tonight, and sometimes that's what we need. To clear a road or to fix a situation. Next year, I suspect, you know, our maintenance as far as trimming and things like that. Probably be around eight thousand, probably five thousand for removals. I'm going to put in a thousand for a stump grinder, there's several places. In town, on Spring Street and various other places where we've cut down trees, or trees have broken and fallen, and there's just a stump left. If Duke Energy partners with us, Duke Energy will trim trees that are next to a power line. They'll remove trees that are problematic if they're next to a power line, but they won't take the stump, so that's an added cost. For us to get that out. And of course, planning on planting trees, a thousand dollars, tree diapers, a thousand dollars to go with that. And those are the things that go around the base to keep them watered, so you don't have to water them every day. You can water them every two or three weeks if it's hot, once a month if it's sort of raining. You can water them every two or three weeks if it's hot, once a month if it's sort of rainy season. And then I've got $4,000 for hazard cleanup. Now, we do have to move and replace all the Bradford bears in town. We've slowly been, you know, doing five or 10 of them at a time because there was 200 to start with. Now we're down to about 87. So that's just one of the things that we're tackling piece by piece. If you look down Cashew Street, you remember the tree board several years ago, they took out with the help of Duke Energy so that we could get the sidewalk repaired too with DOT on Cashew between the bridge and it was Worley or McCall. There was probably 30 trees that got taken down and we replaced them with about 15 or 16 trees that we had permission from property owners to put on their property so that we maintain that tree canopy, which improves property values, which is something we definitely need to do. Any question about trees? 273.1 beautification. This is before we had a maintenance person in the beautification department. This is the company that just kind of, we ordered pine straw from for the gateway entrances. And so we don't use that any longer. So that's what that is. 273.2 Historic Commission, just like the other, the Planning Commission, Historic Commission has to have, is supposed to be kept up to training. There's a state conference every April, which of course was canceled thanks to COVID-19, which is why we didn't spend it. We typically send three or four members and it's a fairly cheap conference and it's in Columbia. So it's not in any kind of hotel or anything like that, what we've got to deal with. Beautification Board, 273.3. This is the dollars that the beautification board itself directs. So when the beautification board gets together, this is kind of the money they direct where, what projects we want it to go to. This year, they did the fall scene. They did Cleanup Day. They did a grab a bag SC litter cleanup in November, which the Lieutenant Governor had started that as a way to get people encouraged to pick up litter and things like that. On a related note to that, we will be getting five free trash cans from Palmetto Pride for our involvement in that, in that program. Even though we didn't have a ton of people out there, we, you know, we did it not knowing that we would get anything from it. We actually had six or eight people that showed up that day and it was cold and windy and rainy and they picked up 300 pounds of trash off the street. So, which was awesome. Any kind of decorations that are added. They put garland and stuff around the Welcome to Darlington signs, lights. They've added a bird bath at Wells Park near the, across from Nick's. And we're going to be kind of rearranging that a little bit, moving the picnic tables so that there's some more seating. So if you ate at Nick's, you could go across and sit at the park meat. The wayfinding sign that got taken out on South Main Street was paid for through this. And any kind of like irrigation, spraying, stuff like that. Some of that gets thrown through here. Next year, I suspect, based on what the board was surveyed, they will want to do an announcement center at City Hall rather than having those two posts that are on the one side that kind of, they're not painted, they're nothing, they're just wood posts that people put, the banners. They want to build something nice to, to hang banners on and require people to have a certain size banner. So that way it doesn't look, it's not falling down and things like that are torn. They want to put some more plants in that casual walkway. If you walk down there this week, they just refreshed the flowers. So you might want to take a stroll. And 52 bypass in front of the Chevrolet place, we've kind of redone some of the planting in front of Carolina Bank and Verizon. Added, thanks to Carolina Bank, that bed of roses to add some color. On the flagpole side, it's just greenery and some of the plants are, have aged out and need to be replaced. That is one of the projects that the beautification board was interested. And of course Cleanup Day, which we usually spend 800 to $1,000 for each Cleanup Day because you're talking about all that pine straw and flowers and and paint and supplies that the volunteers use. All right, 279, other operating expenses. I looked this up because I, I didn't realize that this was, I didn't have $600 down in my notes as far, as far as what that was. This is copies of keys, hooks, random small things. Also, there was a miss a Bristow oil gas bill that got put on here by mistake. That's how it got to $600 because it was $153. And I believe Asset Technology, 199.80, and that was to set all this up.
All right, Lisa, real quick question. On the beautification board, 2273.3 for the $7,000, is it possible that like 221, 226 where you've got 220, $2500 or $25 that wasn't spent last year? Is it possible to move any of that to allow the beautification board to have more funds to work with because they do a wonderful job?
That's a hard question.
Certainly. Is there something that has to be voted on or something she can do or? No, we can, we can, we can move that. Be glad to.
Say it again. What is it that you're proposing?
I, I'm asking that on number 221 where it says telephone $125 to 226 for maintenance and service contract, $2500 spending of that. If that would be possible to add that over to 273.3 so the beautification board would have more funds to work with. They do a wonderful job. It's very visual what they do and.
Right, okay. Okay.
Shift that over to give them more.
All right, so they'll be happy to hear that. They, they have big plans and in the like $60,000 range. So as you, their annual plan of things that they want to do. So I'm sure that they will put that money to good use. Our total operating expenses, we were under budget a little bit and we're expecting to be right around that same number. As far as capital outlay, furniture and fixtures, we really didn't need anything. So, you know, we bought a podium for the meetings, office machines. And the Carnegie Library here, this 389, this expense here is replacing the roof. Oh. Now, this also, this, this money was given to us. Miss Beth Phillips, who passed away and famously donated $4 million to the Historic Commission, also donated $50,000 to the Carnegie Library. And so with that money, we replaced the roof to make sure that it is still a usable building. And so that's why that's not accounted for in our original, because we didn't know we were getting that money. So grand total, you're 227, 166 is what we had planned to spend. We spent 241, 760, which is only 14,000 over, which, you know, when you spend 20,000 on a roof for Carnegie and we still were over on trees, it's pretty good that we're right in that ballpark. And we expect that our expenses next year will be 225, 341.
Howard, is any word on the, on the library, however? That you can share tonight or?
Yes, sir. We are working with the county on a possible deal on that. I don't know if they're ready to have anything formal yet, but we certainly could discuss it when we have a face-to-face executive session.
I have shown that building to every investor that comes to town. Anybody who's even slightly interested, I try and show it to because we own that building and we will own it for several years to come. We cannot sell it for 50 years unless we were to repay hundreds of thousands of dollars to the federal and state governments. We can lease it to somebody, but we can't sell it at this point. But the improvements that we have put into the building have saved the building from further deterioration. We took out the asbestos. You got a new roof. You got a French drain around it. So there's not water coming in. So we've done those things to preserve it in a state that it, once we get some kind of investment, we can move that into a usable facility. And of course, if county does not work out, for whatever reason, they don't seem to work, want to deal with the Carnegie Library. We do have an interested party in, in the upstate. Pre-COVID-19, that was one of the things that they were very interested in. And I would hope that, you know, that's one that we could revisit at, at some point. Any other questions?
Let's move on.
Thank you.
All right. I believe the police department is next, the Chief Kelvin Washington.
Good afternoon, Mayor Boyd, members of council, Madam Clerk, Mr. Garland, our city manager. I'll try to move through this as quickly as possible because I know we've been going for about an hour and a half now. Police 600 salaries, we're slightly over in our salaries line item. A lot of that has to do with the special projects that we do on the weekends, runs, different things that they have downtown at the square, any kind of function that requires extra security, we have to do those. It also includes where we've been short, we've had to bring people in and pay them a time and a half. And so there, we're paying for more than the regular rate. Insurance and bonds, we're good there.
I'll be there for just a second, sir, if you will.
Yes, sir.
Kind of like with the water department is, is we'll ask for a breakdown on that. But again, is that, you think that the extra money that you're paying by bringing elements in, could we possibly, I mean, you have talked about this, try and get it where officers are making more money to where we can keep the officers stable here along with better insurance for them. Do you think that there's, there's a strong possibility that that would work out to where if we were able to look at raising their fees to keep them there?
Mayor, in all honesty, that's a possibility. I would hate to tell you that yes, raising the salaries would be able to keep officers here, their agencies. There are agencies that make, that offer their personnel much more money than we make here and they're having the same problem. So I, I would hate to say that, but that would definitely, I believe that would definitely help, sir. Anyone else on that before I move forward? Toward insurance, not sure Mr. Howard, Mr. Garland would have to explain that. Workman's cop, workers' compensation is pretty much self-explanatory. So is the retirement fund. As you can tell, the retirement fund is slightly higher with estimated expenditures versus what was adopted by council. A lot of that has to do with the more money that the personnel makes, the, the higher the percentage is of overtime, oh, excuse me, that goes towards their retirement. Same with the social security. Moving on down to printing and office supplies, we are slightly over with printing and office supplies. Normally, we're pretty much right on target with that. But this year, we, we ran us a little bit over, but as you can tell, right under it with postage, we're actually under. Same with membership dues, training, we're actually under COVID-19 pretty much for this, just about the second part of the fiscal year, pretty much wiped out a lot of our travel and training. So we didn't, we, we had some monies left over in the travel and training budget. I doubt very seriously if we will be doing very much travel or training between now and July 1, when the new fiscal year starts. Auto operating expenses were pretty much, we should be on target with that. Telephone, we're under. Maintenance and service contract has been a, an issue for us. We've got quite a few things coming out of that line item. I spoke with Mr. Garland earlier. We, he and I probably, we definitely will be meeting assessing maintenance and service contracts. We've got quite a few things, members of council coming out of that particular line item. Our maintenance contract for our body worn cameras, which is held by Exxon, Palmetto 800, which is Motorola, which is our radio maintenance contract, Asset Technology Group, which is our computer folks, EROX copiers contract, Nicholson, who handles our software contract, our maintenance for sled NCIC system, which is Datamax. We also take our cable, our internet out of that as well, radio repairs, quite a few other things. Our maintenance on the postage machine, custom signals, who does our radar guns. Again, quite a few things, if there are any repairs, they come out of that line item as well. So we're, we're going to be talking with Mr. Garland and then taking another look at that particular line item.
Chief, can I, this is Howard. Can I ask you a question on 220? How did we go from 4,000 projected to no use to 4,000 projected again? Or electricity, water and gas?
I have no earthly idea, sir. I don't handle that particular bill. Those, I think what Mr. Garland does is he splits those bills among all of the departments is what I'm assuming. So I have no idea what our portion is, sir. I'm sorry.
Howard, is that pretty much what you're doing is just separating it out?
That, that had been the case. I believe it may have been rolled together in another line item.
So are we duplicating numbers or are we not accounting for numbers?
We, we, we could roll, I'm sorry, somebody is texting. We could roll that in to number, geez, sorry, to 226 if you wanted to. And I think it's just a matter of accounting for it in either 570 or 580.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not counting it twice or not counting it at all. That's my concern. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else before I move forward? All right. Nothing there for 227, 231, nothing. Hardware and building material, nothing. Radio supplies. We moved a little bit of money around, as you can tell, between the radio supplies and uniforms. We took a little bit of money out of our uniform line item and created a radio supplies line item for us. Those batteries for our portable radios are extremely expensive. In fact, if we've got to replace one of those portable radios, it's about 2,000 to 2,500. And as I said earlier, a lot of that was coming out of that 226 line item. So that's going to be a little bit of relief off that 226 line item with that $4,000. Uniforms, it's pretty much self-explanatory. The officers' uniforms as well as the clothing allowances for the folks who have to purchase a business attire for, for our plainclothes personnel, as well as our narcotics personnel. Any questions about those line items before we move on to the next page? Thank you. Physicals or annual physicals for the officers. At this point, we have spent about $3,500. I think we've got a few other. We have spent about thirty-five hundred dollars. I think we've got a few other people that have not gone and gotten their physicals. They should be, they will be going between now and July one. Vehicle insurance has increased a little bit because we've added a few other vehicles into the fleet. Building insurance, that's a Howard Garland question there, if there are any questions about that. Awards. Let me double check on awards. I'm thinking that we may have I don't have it in front of me. I thought we had spent some of that particular line item. But with four hundred dollars there, different awards during the year we give personnel. Other operating expenses, ten thousand dollars. I know that we have spent more than that out of there. Again, as Mr. Garland indicated earlier, these are projected expenses. So these expenses are slightly off. So I know that we have, we spent more than that out of that. The other operating expenses is kind of, is kind of a catch-all. We use that line item for expenses that are not budgeted. Things that come up during the year that were unexpected. And we use that line item to kind of catch those things. Any questions about that before I move on to juvenile expenses?
Yes, sir. On like physicals on number two fifty.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that done? At one time it was done locally in the city. Is it still done locally now or was it?
Yes, sir. And that was one of the reasons why it was done late because there was some discussion at one point. We were considering using another vendor, but we decided to remain with the local vendor because we were looking at some other options. Two eighty-one is juvenile expenses. That particular line item is always difficult to, to, to project. Juvenile expenses is where, is a lot of item that we use to pay for the detention of juvenile defendants. As you can tell, this fiscal year, we had quite a few days. The South Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice charges fifty dollars per night per juvenile for them to house those juveniles while they're waiting to be, while their fate is, we're waiting for their fate to be determined. We only budgeted three thousand because the previous fiscal year, I think we spent a little bit less than three thousand. Again, it's hard to say, you know, we've got four thousand dollars in there for next fiscal year. We might spend a thousand, we might spend seven thousand. It's hard to say. It all depends on our juvenile crime and how things go, and also the judges. There are some judges that are a little tougher than others, and if they determine that they want to detain those juveniles, then those numbers are going to be a little higher. We had a couple of juveniles this past year that gave us some trouble, and so we asked the solicitor's office and the family court judges to detain those individuals. And that's the reason why we ran over as much as we did in that particular line. Any questions about that before we move forward? Radio dispatchers is, that's the money that we pay the county to handle our E nine one one dispatch service. Our total, three twenty-eight, four thirteen is what we're budgeted. We spent three thirty-seven, five hundred, which is, in my opinion, is although it's over and I don't like to be over on my budget, most of that, a lot of that came out of that one line item. Machines, the maintenance and service contracts. And again, I'll be meeting with Mr. Garland this week to take a look at that particular line item and see what we can do to do a better job of that. Furniture and fixtures, we did not spend any money out of that. Office machines either. Debt retirement, debt retirement is payments on police vehicles. There were some vehicles that were purchased prior to me getting here. The debt has been settled on those vehicles. We do not owe anything on those vehicles. The only money that we will owe on vehicles will be the new vehicles that we've got the fifty thousand dollar grant from USDA for. And I believe we are only going to have to finance about sixty-five thousand dollars to add to that fifty. But those vehicles will be ready to go. We won't have to do anything to them except just, you know, put the officers in them. Any questions about debt retirement?
Chief, any idea when those vehicles could be delivered? Is USDA giving any guidance on that?
No, sir. USDA is actually ready to go, to be totally honest with you, Mr. Garland. I'm going to hold up. We are waiting. Supposed to call the gentleman back next week with Dodge. We're waiting to see if there'll be a few chargers for us to get. Otherwise, we will have to go with SUVs. And the SUVs are, I think about three or four thousand dollars more per vehicle. But that may be the only vehicle that we'll be able to get. So I'm kind of holding out to see if we can pick up a couple of chargers since our order is so small compared to a lot of the larger agencies. The gentleman advised me that quite a few agencies, because of everything that went on with COVID nineteen, canceled their charger orders and went ahead on and upgraded and got the SUVs. So he feels, he seems to think that there may be a few chargers left over and we'll be able to pick up three of them, which would be great for us.
Chief, it seems like you were saying a year or so ago that you were having problems with the chargers not holding up as well as some other vehicles. Would it be, if that's still the case, would it be good to go back with chargers or do we need to go with the SUVs?
Well, sir, you're absolutely correct, but there were two versions of the chargers. The ones that were purchased before were V sixes. The ones that we're considering purchasing are V eights. In the V six models, the air intake was very low to the ground. I think it was like maybe six to eight inches off the ground, and you know, we do get a lot of flooding here. And the V eights, the air intake is quite a bit higher, so we won't have that problem. The suspensions on the V sixes were also, for whatever reason, not that well-built either. Quite a few people had problems with the V sixes, but nowhere near as many complaints with the V eights.
Now, all the, chief, is all the vehicles we own them now or releasing any vehicles or?
Well, we do have the, I'm sorry, thank you so much for reminding me of that. We do have the three leased vehicles from three, four, five leased vehicles, excuse me, five.
Enterprise?
From Enterprise, yes. And we're paying, trying to get those paid off as quickly as we can. So I stand corrected, corrected. Please accept my apologies. We do have a few vehicles that we do owe.
Better to go ahead and purchase the vehicles or lease them or which one was better?
Initially, myself and Mr. Garland thought that it would be better to lease, Mayor Boyd, but we've I think it's, it's going to be better to purchase. When we really, really look into this lease, where they get you at is in year four or five. Because the lease payments keep going up. The other thing is if you damage one of those vehicles, the resale price goes down and all of that is figured into the prices that they give you. I think over the years, quite a few agencies are going to regret this, the lease project. And so we did one year and we decided we were not going to continue with it, but we kept the vehicles and we're just paying for the vehicles.
Well, Chief Washington's been nice. We had some problems with that company. They, we would pay our monthly lease on those vehicles and they would call and ask us why we hadn't paid the bill, and they did that for five months straight. Even though we showed them proof of canceled checks when we paid the bill. Seems like the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. We got tired of dealing with their bill collection folks and we didn't know them anything. So that's one of the reasons we also cut the relationship with that company.
Mr. Garland so eloquently put it, yes, I'm being nice. But again, I think that it's better, it's always better to purchase. Because the, the, the way they do this leasing in by the fourth or fifth year, your payments are extremely high. Traffic control equipment, that's I wish we would just put cones because that's exactly what, it's traffic cones and also some of the traffic and control equipment that we give our crossing guards as well. Page twenty-seven. And that is pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions?
No. Let's move on. It's time to move on.
Let me move on, but I would like to make a note of working on finding more money for the officers.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor Boyd and I have had a couple of conversations about that and will be working very diligently on that. For both fire and for both police and fire.
Yeah.
Thank you all, and I appreciate serving the city of Darlington. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve as a public safety director here. It is truly a blessing. The men and women of the police and fire department are exceptional people and I am blessed to serve with people of that caliber. Again, I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity.
Does this, does this part cover the public safety part also or?
Which, which part?
Is this the police department?
Yes, sir. This is just the layout of
You serve as, you serve as public safety director also, so is there? Would that be brought up separately or?
No, sir. I'll only do the police budget. Chief Kavanaugh is going to do the fire budget.
I mean, as far as public safety director. Where does that fall?
That puts me in charge of both the police and fire departments.
Because we had, I mean, we had had a discussion before about the buildings being inspected and so I'm trying to find who I, should I still question about that that there are still?
Okay, as far as the buildings being inspected, inspected, the fire inspections are done by the fire department, but any other building inspections would be done by the codes enforcement officer. And that does not fall up under me. But the fire inspections, they do fall up under me. Yes, sir. Chief Kavanaugh and I have met and discussed the fire inspections, and as soon as things clear up a little bit more with COVID nineteen, they're going to be a lot more regularly accessible than before as it relates to the fire inspection. Fire inspection. I'm sorry, sir.
I'd just like to make a note that I had spoken with Howard and you both about it that
Yes, sir.
Not, and it's not just you, but it's from years, years back that our city has not inspected buildings, as far as fire codes. And, you know, I won't relate into rumor because it's all rumor, but I know as a personal business owner with locations in different places, ours has never been inspected where they have been in Florence and Parksville area, Venice areas are inspected on a yearly basis. Then, as I spoke with you before about tearing that warehouse down, Brown Street, that should have never been left that way and it should have been before you got here even, you know, that should have even
Yes, sir.
Been tackled and it wasn't. And so how many more buildings do we have like that is what I've asked before.
Yes, sir.
That are of public safety for, you know, for our city and for our police officers and fire department, all we could run into and all of a sudden there's a fire and person in there, so like they go and take them out and it's just major. I'm assuming it's called this foreign insurance and things like that too, but I don't know if they could help us with that enough, but I just brought that up a number of times, we're glad that it be addressed.
Yes, sir. And again, Chief Kavanaugh, Chief Kavanaugh and I spoke, I think it was last month, and he'll be able to elaborate a little more on it in his presentation. Where we are considering a, some sort of schedule or some sort of plan where there are so many building slash fire inspections done per week or within a time period, and so is that everyone will be checked at least once a year.
And publicly want to tell you thank you too. So I sent you the text for while everybody can see it for doing the inspection for as the police coming by and inspecting the buildings, leaving the
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And that's a lot of extra work, a lot of extra work, but all that, all that together could help save us money and save the lives and also save it on the juveniles and
Absolutely.
If you're spending, we're spending money on and things like that, but just checking the buildings, making sure that all our businesses are secure.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all again.
I believe Pat Kavanaugh is up next with the fire department.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I will try to keep this brief. I know we have a lot of things to go over. You have a couple more departments to get through. So I'll just go over some of the areas or some of our concerns that Chief Washington and Mr. Garland and I have found. One of our biggest problems, we were over in a couple of areas and I'm here to explain why. If you look at the first item on our, on our page twenty-nine, it's going to be the salaries. Our projected expenditures versus what we had adopted by council. It has a couple of things coming on. We did not expect some people being out and a lot of vacations being done and special events. Normally, special events, sometimes correctly come on, Mr. Garland, come out of hospitality tax. So that made with the vacations, people being out, that made an overage in our annual salaries. In two thousand twelve, we had approximately six to eight part-time people. But if we had someone out, we would call someone in. And that was okay. Right now, we have nobody on a part-time basis. We're trying to address this issue. I've got a plan in place to Mr. Washington and Mr. Garland that will save us. So whenever someone's out, instead of paying time and a half, we will do a basic flat rate. Which should help us on that one. So hopefully, if it works out, we can address that problem. Now, what I can do, go down here, just something special you guys want to look at, because I know it's going to be a long night. I'll just touch on the big things. If we go on down, you'll see our next big issue is number two one seven, auto operating expenses. The big story with that is this, our business is responding to emergencies. I can't tell you if it's going to be a slow year or a big year. I can't tell you if a fire truck is going to break and a fire truck is not. I can tell you that fire trucks are a little more expensive to repair than a basic car. If you take your car to the local Chevrolet place to get the oil changed, you're going to spend fifty to sixty dollars. A service on a fire truck can run up to a thousand dollars for an oil change. And depending on the mileage we put on is the frequency that has to be done. And we also have federal regulations that tell us what we have to do on these pieces of equipment. So if we have an accident, they can't go back on us and say, hey, your brakes were bad or the park's doing isn't bad. So that's going to accumulate for some of our overages. We have a little rough year with some of the equipment.
I don't, this is Howard. I don't, I don't believe anybody's going to question an operating expense like that if it's something that's going to maintain the safety of the vehicle for, you know, the vehicle's sake itself and for the folks who are working with you. So thank you for the explanation, but you know, when you're talking about this amount of money and, you know, the requirements and what you need, I don't think you're going to get any argument that that's something that you have to do. It is what it is.
The next item down there is going to be item two two six. That's going to be our maintenance and service contracts. Problem we've got with that is we have different things coming online all the time, things we're supposed to do. We had to sign on to the Palmetto eight hundred system, which is Motorola, to maintain our mutual aid contract with the state. So that one small item has to cover our PD communications for our VHS system. There's an annual contract we have to pay for that. It covers our Palmetto eight hundred system. It covers our Xerox for our copies. Our Nicholson software, which we do our fire track and our NIFRS. It covers Asset Technology Group, our new internet technology folks. And it also covers something we have e-dispatch, which is something we use to all the firefighter cell phones. If there's a down, in, down in the system or the paging system goes out, cell phones turn into a pager. So all that amounts to more than originally budgeted. So that's why we have an over increase in that. And we're hopefully next year, we can adjust it up a little bit to cover some of that. Um, also looking down, you'll see two items that I want to bring to your attention. One is two thirty seven, which is radio supplies. And the other one is three ninety, radio and equipment. These things are done this way. Radio supplies, if we need a battery, that's what it's going to be for. If we need a microphone, that's what it's going to be for. If we have to purchase a radio, that's what we do with the three ninety. What you don't see is if something breaks. Um, we have a bad fire, a fireman breaks the radio, we have nowhere to take that out of. So resort all that back to two seventy nine, other areas that we don't have to. That'll bring us to our two seventy nine, things like that, which is on the next page, page thirty. Other operating expenses, radios break at a fire, fire hoses go down, something breaks on a truck, a piece of equipment. It's not covered under everything, that's where you'll see that line item go up. And we had a kind of a rough year this year. Some years we don't have many fires, it's down. Other years we have pretty decent fires or bad fires, things happen. So this is the line item, we take it out and that's why our two seventy nine is going to be over. We're going to hopefully adjust it up a little bit next year and cross our fingers and hope nothing major happens. Any questions so far? All right, moving down to three eighty five, that's going to be another item you're going to see, it's going to be overage a little bit. And let me explain this one. Three eighty five is what we use for general goods. And we also have in three eighty five, something called FEMA grants, which we apply for federal funding. Over the past, since I've been here, we have received probably over half a million dollars in FEMA equipment. When we do this, the way it works is FEMA allocates the money after we purchase. It is a, if I'm wrong, Howard, a five percent match, correct? So this year we received a twenty five to twenty six thousand dollar FEMA grant. And the way that works is we pay the bill upfront and FEMA reimburses us. So FEMA reimburses us back, we don't actually get to see the credit on the line item budget. That's why you're going to see an overage in that account. The actual amount we spent was five percent of that, which is about twelve hundred and fifty to thirteen hundred dollars. So that's why that line item looks a little bit high, but um, city gets the money reimbursed back from FEMA.
The FEMA grants are a good deal for us, as, as Pat said, I think we've gotten a half dozen of them over the years. And they're all ninety five, five grants, so it's hard to beat that type of deal for, for your fire department.
All right, moving down, any questions so far? Okay, the last one I want to bring your attention to is going to be three eighty nine, that's going to be our medical supplies. That's the account we use when we run first responder medical calls. Uh, we started first responder medical calls back in two thousand twelve because there's some issues getting help for people. Ambulances seem to be slower, there's not enough in the county. So we stepped up and started a first responder program. Based on the amount of calls you receive every year and the type of calls, we can't judge how much equipment we're going to use. And also this year we got hit with the COVID. So once the COVID started, I got together with Chief Washington and Mr. Garland. And we started to squirrel back and pack that some supplies for us. So that's why you're going to see an overage in that line item. Uh, however, I do know Chief Washington has, working with Mr. Garland on some reimbursements from the federal government. But that's going to be our big kicker there. Good Lord willing, we'll get some of that stuff back when the federal government reimburses us.
So Chief, can you tell me what two seventy one is? What does that cover?
Special department supplies, that's something, if I don't have nowhere to put it. Um, like for instance, well, four or five times a year, I host a quarterly fire marshal training for the state. And what I do is I bring fire marshals in from all over the state. That way the few fire marshals that I have here, we don't have to send them out and pay for motel rooms and travel expenses. So we bring them in, we feed them. Um, when we host fire academy classes, we'll feed people here. That's a deadline on there, so something we don't have, I have no other budget to put it in, that's what we use it for. And it may be chainsaws, there's no real line item for chainsaws, chains after a storm. Um, weed eaters for cutting grass around the station, lawn mowers, things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Folks, do we have any other questions? I don't want to keep you guys tied up because I know we got a few more things to go.
Chief, I know that, that uh, we talked at another work session about problems you have
Oh, you can't hear me.
At the building, uh, getting in and out of the building. That's not here as a part of the budget, but I'm assuming you're putting information together to help us when we have another work session on some of the long range needs that the fire department has got.
Yes, sir. After the council meeting where I spoke to, to you folks, um, Howard, Chief Washington and I have met. And we realized there's going to be an issue with the, with the roads out. We are trying to figure out ways and money to figure out how to get us out of here. That's, it's, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when the next time the street collapses and if we're going to have damage or if I come to work and like I said before, the building is caved in on one side. But we're working diligently, trying to figure out ways and get this work.
I can add, I can add something to that, Miss Councilman Millian. We're working on a donation of a piece of property um, in Darlington from a company. And we'd like to locate the fire station on that property. We've had several conversations with the uh, aforementioned company this calendar year. And we would expect a gift, uh, hopefully no later than the end of the calendar year. And then it's a matter of uh, coming up with funding for a, a new building. That would be sometime in twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two. There is a community development grant, CD BG grants available for fire stations. So we would be probably pursuing that if we were able to follow through on the uh, gift of the property from a, a company in the city of Darlington.
Thank you.
Uh, I got a question for Kevin. Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Is there a, uh, without using the S word, sue, is there a legal matter that we could take against the state? For knowingly, knowingly uh, leaving that road the way it is, not just for the fire department, for, for, for anybody. Because by the way, knowingly of preparing a road uh, in a dangerous form and not properly. I mean, the road that we're talking about, doing, doing Broad Street, they're saying that we're going to have to pack the dirt by every six inch, twelve inches and yada, yada, yada. Okay. Yet uh, the one on Broad Street, I have video of the guys down there with the road sign, placing the road sign, a piece of material over top of a broken line, uh, knowingly that it's not going to hold. There, there should be some legal ramification for that.
I mean, yeah, simply speaking, someone does a job negligently and that leads to damages, then you can sue. Um, and, and as complicated as us lawyers like to make things, that, that's really all that a lawsuit is about. Someone does something negligently and it causes damages. Um, so if they did not do their job in, in a way uh, that they're supposed to, and we can prove that it's negligent, then yes, I would assume there's something. With the caveat being that uh, you know, suing uh, municipalities, government and all that, it is a totally different set of uh, liability standards than, than it would be for just suing an individual. But uh, simply speaking, yes, if they did something negligent, then we would have some.
There should be some way that we can hold them accountable to prepare that road the way it should be prepared. When we know it's a constant reputation of, you know, sending me down. Sending me and you down there with a shovel to fix it, you know.
Right, right, a, a, and they have a certain, you know, the, again, uh, uh, standards that they have to adhere to. And if they don't, then they're negligent and, you know, maybe it's something as good as maybe firing off a letter to them and explaining to them our, our, our concerns. And sometimes that uh, a letter from a law firm will get them off the snide, so to speak. But yeah, but I would assume there's some recourse, definitely. Yes, sir.
Okay, guys, we don't have anything else from you. I will uh, let you move on and I appreciate you taking the time to help me present it and listen.
Oh, Pat, I know we got to go, but uh, the fire inspections, I'll, I'll question you about that also. Uh, is that something that's done on a normal basis over the past years?
No, sir, it's been hard getting manpower to do this and we've been meeting, trying to, trying to figure a way to have it up. Um, I've met with Chief Washington and also Mr. Garland. We're trying to figure out something to do, uh, the best way we can get it done.
And Pat, Pat, on that same subject line, um, I know there's some ordinance restrictions as far as what you're legally allowed to do. I don't know if we could research some of the other surrounding communities who've gotten a little bit more proactive on trying to keep their buildings up to standard or bring them back up to standard. But if we could maybe look into that and if we need to adjust some of our ordinances, please let us know.
Okay, yeah, on that issue, when we go out and we find a violation or a citation, all we do is write up a, a piece of paper. Um, far as legal ramifications, we do not have any. If we have an issue, we mainly contact the police department and they will go ahead and try to write it up on the, on the ordinances and zones they have. That could be something that we can research and we've talked about before, giving the actual fire marshals, the authority to write a court summons. But that's, we'll have to research that some more and see where we can get with that.
Right, at this moment, if you walk into a, a building and the exit signs aren't working and the um, doors blocked and the fire extinguishers are outdated or they have no fire extinguishers, you can just write them a warning is all you are able to do at this moment?
We have a couple of options, we can write them the warning, give them thirty days. Most of the time if we walk in, we find a violation, the way we explain it to the owners is try to educate them. And normally they comply with us and work. If they don't, we usually call the police department to come up there and say, look, help us out, we're going to shut the place down. And then we go that way. Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, we don't have that issue. Uh, once we confront the people and try to educate them very nicely and calmly, they pretty much comply.
Mayor Boyd?
Yes.
If, if I might um, interject, um, but again, and I, I do want to, and again, remind uh, you and, and the members of council that Chief Kavanaugh and I have had exhaustive conversations um, about fire inspections. And, and I think that you all will see uh, in the future that we will be doing more of fire inspections than what we've done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mister Mayor, we've had eight o'clock, um, we stopped at eight o'clock last night. Do you want to continue on or do you want to adjourn until tomorrow? We've got, how much more do we have? We've got um, codes enforcement, we have the uh, street and sanitation and stormwater departments. We also have recreation and parks and recreation.
Everybody else, I got all that.
I don't.
So whether you want to do it tonight or tomorrow, you have the other side.
Well, I'm, I vote for tomorrow.
I'm going either way.
I would go for tomorrow. I find that after two hours, the ability to process information doesn't work as well as it used to.
I would vote tomorrow as well, I'm having tons of issues.
All right, well, we'll make a motion to adjourn for tonight. Do we have a motion?
I so move.
I'll second that.
All right, and tomorrow night, will everybody in favor for that?
Yeah.
Tomorrow night at six o'clock, Howard?
Six o'clock? Uh, six o'clock's fine, yes.
Six o'clock fine with everyone?
Yes.
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 All right, but thank you, everyone.
Everyone have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye bye.
Good night.
Night, y'all.